All right, so that pretty much takes care of our executive session. I am going to, at this time, just make notice to everyone in the room. If you are here for our continued docket, number fourteen, forty-one eighty-five Black Rock Turnpike has been withdrawn. Number three, thirteen seventy-six, has been continued to the February meeting. Number ten, three eighty Pine Creek Avenue, has been continued to February's meeting. Two eighty-one East Lawn Street has been continued to the February meeting. And I believe that, no, one more. Forty-one Riverside Drive has also been continued to the February meeting. Are here to speak to, object to, approve of, or have any business with any of those applications. It will be taken up at the appropriate time. It will not be heard today. All right, so I'm going to close the executive session. That gives us about seven minutes until the meeting starts. If anybody needs to get anything. Calling to order. This is me calling the meeting to order. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Today is January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. As I mentioned in our executive session, and I will mention now as we've had a few people come in. If you have come to hear, speak on, or have any business with, for our continued docket number fourteen, that application has been withdrawn. Application number three, thirteen seventy-six Pequot Avenue. That item has been continued. Item number ten, three eighty Pine Creek Avenue. That item has been continued. Number four on our regular docket today, two eighty-one East Lawn Street has been continued. And finally, number nine, four eighty-one Riverside Drive has been continued. Those continued items will be heard in February, unless further continued. So if you have any business with those either online or in the meeting, you don't have anything to do today. So, on to our general call. First, when a matter is first called, the applicant or his or her agent will present the case. Once the call is complete, originals of any petitions should be given to our clerk, Jody. Copies of the petitions should be then distributed to the board members. After the applicant's presentation, all interested persons in favor of the application will come forward and speak. After those in favor have spoken, those in opposition will then be heard. And his or her agent may then address the comments made by those in opposition. Second, this meeting is being taped as required by law. It is important that we be able to understand the tape. Therefore, only one person may speak at a time, and anyone who speaks must come forward, speak into the microphone, and give his or her name and address. We welcome the comments of all interested persons, but we must exercise discretion in making sure that your comments are on point. And if you are too far off the point, we reserve the right to restrict your comments at any time. Third, applicants and interested persons may remain in attendance after the public hearing for the executive session to find out what was decided. Or you may call the zoning office in your opposition to find out what was decided. Fourth, if an application for waiver is granted, the waiver is not valid, if notice is not recorded, the applicant must bring a check in the amount of sixty dollars made out to the town of Fairfield to the zoning office on Wednesday or later following the meeting for proper recording of the notice filing. Your opposition waiver involving construction of a new dwelling and additions or exterior alterations will require an as-built survey prior to the issuance of certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. So, that's our script, and I'm going to run through a few things for everyone in the room. I have very simple expectations as chair. If I tell you that your comments are too far afield, your opposition or questioning of any application, I will call you back. I expect you to bring your points back onto topic. If you are not familiar with what a hardship is, you all have heartstrings. They all like to be tugged by counsel and by everyone else. We, as a board, are bound to your property, not, okay? What we can consider, what we are bound to consider, must be tied to your property. Some aspect of your property that inhibits or limits your ability to do something. We all understand there's a difference between want, entitlement, and what you're able to apply for or what we're able to consider. Okay, we are not planning zoning board. Traffic concerns and things of that nature are not within the purview of this board. So just bear that in mind. We have very experienced board members here who will certainly ask specific questions to help guide you to such points, if need be. But what I also want to stress as chair is that we, forty-one eighty-five, not going to press anybody who didn't bring a lawyer. We're not going to, you know, make this uncomfortable for anyone. If you're not sure, feel free to ask questions. you know, that's, that's pretty much it. Just be nice. Just be nice. Don't, you know, don't, don't get any, you know, don't get too far afield. Personal forty-one eighty-five, recclivities aside, here to listen to any opposition. If that opposition starts sounding like Hatfields and McCoys, I will pull you back. Okay, that's not why we're here for anything. So with that, let's get started with the call. So I still have to go in order and read them off, right? So on our continued docket, forty-one eighty-five, that item's been continued. We'll just go down the line. Number three on our continued docket, thirteen seventy-six Pequot Avenue, has been continued. Number ten, three eighty Pine Creek Avenue, has been continued. That brings us to our general docket. Item number one, one twenty-three Buena Vista Road, map twenty-eight parcel one fifty-eight, lot coverage. Oh, and by the way, the chair reserves the right to butcher anybody's name. A petition, a petition of Jeffrey A. Stewart and Nicole M. Roy for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five dot two dot four, reduce the rear setback from thirty feet. Currently, twenty-two point nine, proposing twenty-two point five feet. And section five dot two dot five, increase lot coverage from twenty percent. Currently, twenty-two point four percent, proposing twenty-four point seven eight percent. Permission to construct a rear deck. Addition, premises is a zone. Name and address, please.
Afternoon, my name is Nicole Marie Roy. I am the homeowner with my husband at property one two three Buena Vista Road.
From neighbors.
Instead, we are just seeking a variance to square off our back deck. It's a, currently a non-conforming existing lot since the house was built in nineteen twenty-nine. So you already stated the setbacks and what we're proposing and the current coverage. I don't know if I should state again or, okay?
Is that all?
That's all we want, want to square off our decks.
From neighbors. Do we, questions from the board? Go ahead.
Just in one sentence, my hardship is.
My hardship is our existing lot is non-conforming since the house was built in nineteen twenty-nine.
Actually, I thought we got that. Any other, any other questions from the board?
Any comments from neighbors? Anybody submitted any pros or cons?
I'm just looking at our contractor as he sends out the letters.
Not that, not that we're aware of.
Do me a favor, just come on up, introduce yourself, put yourself on the record.
Hi, I'm Jason with Raymond Design Builders. We haven't seen anything from us. I don't know if Matt got anything either, but, and then I don't think any of your neighbors have.
Seeing none, hearing none. Any comment in favor, either online or present? Any opposition, either online or present? Seeing none, hearing none. Item is closed. Onto number two. Petition of six Oxford Road, map two eighty-three parcel thirty-two A. Petition of Kimberly A. and Michael J. Paretta for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five dot two dot four dot three, to reduce the street line, the hot tub, for an accessory structure from thirty feet, proposing ten feet. Permission to install a hot tub. Premises a zone.
Everybody, I'm Michael Paretta of six Oxford Road. Yeah, so we're, we're looking to put a, like a ground hot tub for wellness purposes. It's ironic, my wife is actually just pregnant with our firstborn, so she won't be able to use it. We probably won't even build it right on the top of, so, but, yeah. We're, there are two options, put it behind our house. One, on the one side, which would not require zoning variance. It's problematic because of the septic and leaching field. So we had that cleared with the health department here. The only other side is the other corner where we're trying, we're proposing, where we planted green giants. So it's totally private from the street. The hot tub, of course, would lock on top. But you would also put in another fence around it, too. So totally both to the street. I think that's it.
Any questions from the board? Jane?
Why isn't it closer to your house?
Um, I, I'm trying to put as close to, as to the houses as possible. I.
It's like twenty feet from the house.
I'd be more closer. I'm happy to pull it closer to house. I think there, there's also the problem where there's a, a bigger, uh, entrance to the basement. So you also, you need a little clearance there, but.
Yeah, see that.
I mean, I had the, I had the surveyor come out, did the original survey, and that's where he drew the lines, where he said that would be best. And I had all our neighbors, all our budding neighbors approve it. And my direct neighbor behind toward the site to. They'll, they'll give the thumbs up if that, if that helps at all.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Anyone either present or online here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here or online here to speak in opposition to this application? And we're back to that. Pause for dramatic effect. Hearing none, seeing none. Go ahead and close this application. Yeah, and move on to.
Yep.
And move on to number three. For the purposes of this application, oh, I did forget to say one thing, by the way. If you choose, and we're back to that, stick around. It's not held against you in any way for our executive session after. It's just a good learning experience because if your application is rejected, that's going to be where you hear why. So if you want to get an understanding of what the deliberation was, what changes if you're going to reapply, anything like that, that's where you're going to hear those things. So just want to let everybody know. And we're back to that wonderful humming from last month. So, number three. Eight seventy-nine Riverside Drive, map one thirty-nine, parcel two sixty. Petition of MLW Design Build LLC for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five dot two dot four, reduce the street line set, street line and sixteen sideline setbacks from thirty feet, seven feet, and twenty-five feet. Currently, twenty-four point one feet to house and fifteen point eight feet to open porch, four point two feet and sixteen point nine feet. Proposing twenty-four point one feet to house and nineteen feet to porch, four point two feet and sixteen point nine feet. And section five dot two dot five, to increase the lot coverage and total floor area from twenty percent and forty percent. Currently, twenty-four and twenty-two point four percent. Proposing twenty-seven point six percent and forty-nine percent. Permission to construct a second floor with attic, a rear two and a half, and front porch additions. And make the home FEMA compliant and a detached one-car garage. For the purposes of this application, Elise will be sitting in, and Katie will be recused herself for this application. So who's presenting?
My name is Inka Ramin La, petitioners, MLW Design Build.
And then the address for the record.
Sure, it's eight seventy-nine Riverside Drive in Fairfield.
That's where your address is. I think we need your address, right, Matt?
My office, my office address is one sixty-one Cherry Street, in Connecticut, oh six eight four zero.
Thank you.
Speaking loud enough? Excellent, okay. So this house is in a FEMA flood zone. It is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Our hardship is that it was built in nineteen fifty-two as pre-existing non-conforming and that it is in a flood zone. It's non-conforming as stated in lot size, lot frontage, lot square feet. It's just under fifty-seven percent of the conforming lot size. Current coverage is twenty-four percent. We are only asking for an additional three point six percent. We are, I will not to increase the side setback. They are remaining. Houses along this block are all morphing into these kinds of homes. So it's nothing that we're asking for that is not typical of itself. Partial is unique, but from the post road to South Benson, all the lots on Riverside are non-conforming and at least eighty percent of the homes, heavy C variances based on this non-formity. I will introduce a seven one six Riverside Drive, who was granted a variance in two thousand and twenty-two, very similar to ours, which I'll bring up in one sec. And we are reducing the front setback based on porch and steps only. We created a recess at the front of the house to create a better street setback. In the rear, we've created a recess at the side yard to help.
Dan, you're not really.
Left side. And we are going to be FEMA compliant with filling in the basement. As far as objections, I understand that there are people here to object. And we did receive one okay, which I will bring up, too. Can I approach with paperwork?
Yep, hand that over to Jody.
Dan, you're not really.
The ones that you're raising, well, I have not.
Okay, that's fine.
When they speak, if they speak.
Yeah, only if they speak.
At least I have to say.
Okay. Questions from the board? Go ahead.
Hi, so I understand you're not really increasing the coverage, but if I are, you are forty-nine percent is what you're requesting? And you're limited to forty? So you're like almost twenty-five percent bigger in volume you're permitted to in that zone? What's the reason for that?
It's because of the, the lot itself is non-conforming. And other homes are very close to one that I just submitted. It's very close to the same percentage that we're at. Someone who's.
We don't, we don't, we just consider every application on its own merits. Question is why you push that percentage instead of keeping in voice.
I could answer that.
So just name, address.
My name is Michael Puff, Tenwood Creek Road in Fairfield, Connecticut. So the reason for that, we already have someone who's within my network that wants to buy this. And we need a bedroom on the main floor because of, they're older. Parents are moving with them and they don't want to go up the stairs. So to get the extra square footage so that we could allow them to live there, that was the idea behind it.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll ask anyone in mine or online or present to, who's here to speak in favor of the application.
Sorry. I, also, I forgot to mention the garage. So one of the reasons we couldn't attach the garage because of the coverage. So we have to relocate it and move it. And we're also getting rid of the shed, so, which we did want, but we're, you know, we, obviously with the limitations that we have, we had to, to move that as well. So, um, as you guys know, the garage is also.
Mine or.
Lot space as well, so we did want to keep the garage. There's three hundred extra square feet there. We got rid of the garage and we, we used that space as well. So that's kind of, it's the idea behind it. I want to give you guys the heads up.
Okay. Uh, anyone in-house or online to speak in favor of this application? No, he's not. Anyone online or in the room here to speak in opposition of the application? Please step up to the podium, introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Michael Black. I live at eight six seven Riverside Drive, which is the house right to the left. I just wanted to add in that I spoke with the homeowners. I'm not really for this, but I asked as part of the variance that they would plant out the whole.
Else?
An arborvitae or a tree that would shield me from the property. Along the, and they said that they would do that as part of the variance, but I didn't hear it come up. So I just want to make sure that that's it and that's part of it. If it's not it, I'm definitely not for a house being built four feet off my property.
Anyone else? Please step forward.
My name is Lowell Halverson. I am the next door neighbor, eight eight seven Riverside Drive, Fairfield, Connecticut. I'm rather neutral to this, but I do note that the, the driveways butt together. And I am completely, it is unattractive if the two actually join. Right now, there's a hedge. Hedge is rather sickly, so I could easily see somebody coming over and just ripping it up, paving it up. And suddenly, I'm married to the next door neighbor, which is really unappealing. I did talk to her about this and they, they did agree to put up a fence. The hedge goes out to the street, so the fence I'm proposing is six feet out to basically the house, then three foot out where the, and you need three feet because you need to see over it for cars and stuff like that. But I don't want the driveways to be perceived by any potential buyer that they have, especially since they've got one lined up. I don't want them to perceive that this whole thing or scooting over. I mean, yeah, the, the property line is right on the hedge. If you take a look at the drawing, you can see the existing fence. It's on the right side. See a little bit of my garage. You can see my driveway if you zoom in on it. That's what I'm referring to. If you want to, like I said, I'm kind of neutral to it because it's kind of the trend of the neighborhood. Uh, but I have seen these jointed driveways and I've seen how people drive up these jointed driveways. Completely unappealing. So, and again, it wasn't mentioned, so I, with that, and I'm a newbie at this. This is the first time I've ever been here. Thank you very much. You know, I'm, I'm here to learn. So I don't know whether or not.
Answered in their reply.
It up, but you know, just in case, I thought I would say something.
Well, I didn't yank you back, so you did well. I, I'll give you a chance in just a second, okay? We're going to get everybody and. You are.
I could go on.
I just want some clarity, can I ask a question? Are we still open to questions?
We're still open, but I want to see if anybody else here is in opposition. Then I'm going to give them a chance to reply and possibly your question will be answered in their reply. Is anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application here or online? Yes, and Joel's not here for this one. Okay, so let me give you guys a minute to come back up and reply to the opposition. And I'm going to do this somewhat in order because, well, why don't you go, guys, go ahead and reply? And then I'm going to, offering as condition, my purview to let the board ask any questions that might have arisen from the objections or your replies.
So just again, Michael Puff, Tenwood Creek Road. I just want to comment that I did speak with, with Mike Black today. And I did agree, obviously pertaining everything well here to, to put the trees in. But Michael had asked if I could put something in writing. However, I was under the impression that if, you know, the reason I had to bring it up was to go through the process correctly.
Offering as condition.
Could hear it out. And then if that's something, like I said, we have no problem with it. I'm assuming, if I'm wrong, correct me, that we would have to put that in with the variance so it would go along with whatever.
So you were, so you're offering that as a condition of the approval of your variance, that you would install that green space?
As well as the fence as well. My clients are more than happy to accommodate all neighbors' space. And if that's what's being requested, we would be more than happy to accommodate.
So you're offering as condition to, let's call them addenda to your application. One would be the green barrier to one neighbor and, I'm going to ask you to help me just, so we can state which side of the property that's, well, no, I'm going to say budding which property that that green barrier is being offered.
The size.
Present of the driveway is his.
The west side. So west side is green barrier.
And when you do, can I ask you about this, though? When you do a green barrier in arborvitae, do you have to also say how many you're doing and how tall they're going to be at, at, right? Because I had this, so you have to say how many and how tall you're going to plant them.
We're going to, so.
Done now?
Yes, that gets done now.
So how, have they agreed on that?
We've not discussed the number, the size or anything. We're, yeah, we're more than happy to make them feel that what their needs are are being accommodated with whatever approval they would receive. So we don't foresee there's a problem, but if it needs to be done now, then we'd be more than happy to talk about it. Also, as well, I, we do have our architect here, so we, we could figure out that number, I would assume, right? His name's Bill, Bill's here. William Levy.
Height.
Whatever it takes to, to fill in that space, we'll be willing to.
Bill, step up to the podium, will you please? Now I'm getting, now we're getting, now we're getting adventurous. I can feel the tension from an architect to my right. So you, so you know, I'm going to guess, height of this.
Probably say that foot on center, maybe five foot on center and like he has ten feet high, probably the right number. I don't want to give a number because then the spacing might get messed up.
But if we, but if we said four foot, we said foot on center with a, a green that reasonably anticipated to grow to a ten foot height. So.
It's on the east side too.
It's on the east side. Make sure we get that right.
I don't want it.
What's that? So let's, we're, we're where we're at, so it goes in if it's. And did you have a question?
Well, I just want to know, is it easier for me, how many linear feet will you cover with arborvitae? Like, because that would solve the question differently, right? That would help me see it clearer.
Circle one hundred and seventeen feet.
Right, so and then you just have to decide on the spacing, right? And they're all that standard planting.
Street to rear yard.
Right.
Is there fence?
Just the rear. He said just the rear. Side of the house, end of the yard, not the front.
Corner of the house.
I mean, I don't think that was specified.
So I'm going to, I'm going to say that see if it's a hundred and seventeen feet from front to rear, call that sixty feet. So that, I put that in the condition that you're going to install sixty feet, sixty linear feet. They have to say what kind it is. It's going to be arborvitae, it could be evergreen.
What does a green barrier means? Nothing.
I could say trees.
Understand. What they're offering.
Okay. All right, so I will put, I will read arborvitae. You guys said arborvitae, correct? So we're going to put arborvitae in the.
Hi. The second. To George Hall Hill Road Reading. I think he had mentioned either arborvitae or green. Yeah.
Green giants.
Green giants and arborvitae.
But he wants something evergreen.
Right, something that's always going to block the view. That's.
Yeah.
We can, we can go with evergreen, but I don't think that's a species, so we're, we're going to, we're going to read it appropriately. The second condition that we're, that I'm going to confirm is that you guys are offering the fence between the driveways in order to provide separation. I'm not going to put the three foot visibility that you guys have to be responsible enough to provide visibility for turning cars and everything else. So I'm going to allow adults to be adults on that, uh, and safety to be safety.
What kind of fence is it going to be?
I discussed cedar because the current.
Cedar's good.
So that should be in the condition, I think.
My only concern is I don't want, I know it's a six foot fence because we don't need a permit for that, right? But I'm just concerned, um, once we get towards the road, like I, I, is it three foot, you know, is it two and a half feet, uh, whatever.
Well, simply, you, you're, you have a height that you're, that's allowable by code. So as long as you don't exceed that, the height of the fence isn't really the concern. It's that you're going to build a cedar fence.
Slightly lower than the current hedge would work.
That's, right, so.
Just kind of.
And there's a natural barrier, the neighborhood's used to it, just goes slightly lower.
That's, that's fine. That's all right, so I, I gotta, I feel like they're getting.
But we can't go on record after they've.
So we're, so you are now on for the condition of those, those two conditions will be read into the call when we go into our session. If it is approved, then this is not saying that anything's going to get approved. If it is approved, these two conditions will be read into the call and you will be bound as such. Okay.
Thank you so much.
See.
Thank you for your time.
You.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Do we need to specify a solid fence, uh?
No, just a fence, the cedar fence. I'm not even going to, I'm going to say cedar. Not going to, the design is not our purview.
Oh, I understand.
Fence is, a fence has been agreed to.
Okay, I'm just, I, fence is fine for the parties, then I, I just, my mind goes.
Yeah, we can't, we can't, we can't, it'd be overreaching for me.
No, no, I, I can understand that.
Going on page five of the catalog and picking, you know. Okay, so with that, no further objections, no, no further speaking in favor of, I'm going to close the hearing on eight seventy-nine Riverside Drive. Number four, two eighty-one East Lawn Street has been continued. And we move on to nine thirty-nine Reading Road. Map two twenty-three parcel forty-five petition of Amy Mistico for a variance of zoning regulation section five dot two dot four to reduce the street line setback from sixty feet proposing thirty-nine point one feet. Permission to construct a detached garage with an accessory apartment premises triple A zone.
Well, thank you for everybody's time. We wish to construct.
Sir, I just need your name, address of your business, or how you're affiliated to this.
David Kramer, husband. Swift wife.
It's usually more than enough quality. But that address. Does he need to state the address for the record, or it's just his address?
I live at nine thirty-nine Reading Road, Fairfield, Connecticut.
Done.
Go for it. Wish to construct a detached garage with an accessory apartment above. Hardship is that we have a legal non-conforming lot due to size and shape, along with a brook that runs along the middle of our property. And most of the inland wetland soils on our property are located in the proximity of the brook. We were approved for a variance. Excuse me, we were approved for a variance for garage and accessory apartment back in August of twenty-two. Since then, the mapping of the wetland soils have changed and we have decided to relocate our garage and accessory apartment to the front portion of our property. We, where we further away from the brook and wetland soils. We have an application in the conservation department and they support the relocation of the structure. Although we are seeking a setback from the property line, the front property line from the required sixty feet proposed to thirty-nine point one foot. Structure will actually be sixty feet setback from the paved portion of Reading Road. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Well, any questions from the board? Bearing none, any.
Questions to clarify. So what do you mean? It's still sixty feet from Reading Road is the, the property line is.
Assume it's like a town right away, so set that line. My property, the map has a little bit of an arch and we're opposing it. I'm still sixty feet away from the asphalt. The actual road itself.
Thank you.
Well, interesting. Seem to be getting more and more of those.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so anyone either in the room or online here to speak in favor of this application? What are you there? Anyone here online here to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none, that draws this hearing to the close.
You have all my neighbor's signatures.
Oh, why don't you give those to Jody? Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's not mine.
There you go.
It's transient, you get a new pet, there you go.
Bribery.
Transient property. All right, watch that stuff. All right, uh, we're going to call now, uh, number six, number two thirty-six Sherwood Farm Road, map one seventy-six parcel twenty-six D. Petition of Janine Zano Thomas Craig M. Thomas for a variance of the zoning regulations section five dot two dot four to reduce the rear setback for an accessory structure from fifty feet proposing thirty-three point five feet. Permission to construct an in-ground pool premises is double A zone. Counsel.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
The new members of the board, for the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm here representing Janine and Craig Thomas. Uh, Janine is sitting right here in front row. Wish you all a happy, uh, New Year. They do own the property at two, three, six Sherwood Farm Road. They reside there with their twin sons, Wade and Luke, who are three and a half years old. Janine's roots are established in Fairfield, Tennessee, Fairfield University some years ago. Craig is a retired New York City firefighter. They spent a lot of time visiting friends in Fairfield based upon Janine's connections. They loved it and it was always their goal to find a home and be able to raise their boys in the town that they love. Uh, they were able to satisfy that, uh, a few years ago, and this is their lifetime home. The application they have before you today is to construct an in-ground swimming pool as shown on the site plan that we have submitted. Uh, and the goal is obviously to create a, uh, swimming pool that could be enjoyed by their friends and extended family and sons, most importantly for many years to come. This site, um, I've got some photographs which I'll do, and I, I know we don't always get out to the sites, but this is the most hardship-based site I've seen in a very, very long time, and I'll exemplify that in a second. But because of that, the Thomases took a great deal of time and attention in finding out where they should put this pool subject to the site constraints and topographical issues that I'll cover with you in a second. And after consideration and for reasons I'll elaborate on in a second, they determined that they would request a variance of section five point two point four to allow the pool, as shown, to be set thirty-three point five feet rather than forty feet for the property. So why didn't they avoid being here today, although it's always nice to see everyone here? Well, the reason for that are many. The geographical issues that I'm going to show you in a minute and the fact that they do have these small children really didn't make it feasible for them in a practical and safe manner to push the pool some six and a half feet back so that they wouldn't be required to seek the variance of the rear yard. If they did that, first of all, they would be confronting extensive rock ledge that is very much prominent on the property. In addition, moving the pool in such a manner would require demolition of their existing deck, uh, stairs, which I'll show you in a second. In addition to the matter of ledge, any other alternative to move the pool in order to avoid the need for the requested variance is not feasible feasible due to the extreme topographical nature of the property, which drops very significantly from the house to the lower area of the lot. So let me just show you that as I pause here. This is, I don't have, I'm not as good as Mr. Russo today, but Janine did bring these. You can pass these down. This is, uh, Mr. Thomas standing in the area of the yard generally where the pool will be. You can see the stairs that are there, and if you could see it, or if you're out on the property, right where he stands in back of that is a ledge where the property drops, as you can see from the survey, most significantly. This is another photograph which documents that. So problem that existed was if we considered the lower level of the lot, because the lot is this, the house is here and then the lot literally goes like this. The problems with that were that that area is only accessible by a very steep rocks and a hill with, as you can see, very significant grade. It's also quite remote from the main house. There'd be no bathroom facilities there. And most importantly, I think for safety reasons, considering the, the boys, it would take them in a pool situation very far away from the house, whereas right now where the pool is located and it's only six and a half feet off of the rear setback line, they, they have a, a good proximity to the house. It will allow, uh, Janine and her husband, uh, you know, to be there to keep an eye on the kids, allow proximate use to a bathroom and what have. So in addition to that, the Thomases have already planted, uh, a number of very attractive arborvitae and they intend to further enhance the landscaping in order to add sort of a park-like feel to that upper area of the property. Uh, and as I'll show you in a second, they have reached out and met with their abutting neighbors, the Goodridges to the south and Oaklawn Cemetery, uh, uh, to the west. And they have, to the east, I should say, and, uh, they have signed petitions, which I'll give you in a second, where they have no objection to the granting of variance. So what, and I'll give you those now as I speak. So as I said, if you were standing out on this property, like some of you may have done or people used to do, the house is here, you can see the proposed pool. This stone wall area is shown in one of the plans, and then you can see the very, very significant topographical, uh, impact here as this property, this portion of the property doesn't slope, it drops down to here. And that taken into consideration with some of the ledge issues up here, really leave them, left them in a very constrained situation in terms of their ability to locate the pool, and that's why they sought variance. And I said I was going to give you all these and they didn't. These are the petitions that were signed by the Goodridges. As you can see, they abut and, uh, Mr. Hawley on behalf of, uh, Oaklawn Cemetery. They obviously. So let's discuss briefly the, the legal underpinnings here. As you know, under Connecticut general statutes, eight, yes, six, eight, three, you need to make two findings. One, the variant won't be shown to substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan and that two, there are factors relative to the, the property that establish unusual hardship as recognized by our case law. With regard to the first aspect of the test, I cite the Egan case in my material. That holds that if the use to be allowed after the variance is granted is a permitted use in the zone, then that part of the test is met. In the present case, obviously, property is zoned for residential use, and that would include such an accessory use as the proposed swimming pool. As I just indicated, we also did reach out to our abutting neighbors and, and they have evidence that they have no objection to the granting of variance. As you also know, with regard to the hardship requirement, uh, hardship is one that the zoning board of appeals needs to find uh, in order to grant a variance. In essence, what you have to show and demonstrate is that because of some peculiar characteristics of the property which the law recognizes, strict application of the regulations does cause hardship. That's the Archibald case and the Dolan case. Here you have classic hardship, in my opinion, respectfully. One, it's been held by our Connecticut courts that topographical conditions involving significant changes in grade create a proper basis for a finding of hardship. All those cases are cited at page three of my schedule B. Other cases, and I cite at the top of page four, I make specific reverence to, uh, the presence of unusual soil conditions, including ledge as a proper basis for a finding of hardship and ledge does, as I said earlier, directly implicate our ability to push uh, the, the, the pool in such a manner that the setback variance that we see could be avoided. So in the present case, the Thomases looked carefully at all the feasible options for locating the pool, and those were extremely limited by these hardship factors of topography and ledge. Uh, and, and I think these factors do establish satisfaction of the hardship requirement as established under the regulations. So in summary, Janine and Craig appreciate your time. They are excited about their new home, which, as I said, for them is their forever home. And they're going to raise their young family there, and the proposed pool will provide a very nice and enjoyable recreational amenity for them. The location of the pool was carefully chosen. They didn't seek to seek the variance likely, but after consideration of the factors that I've referenced in terms of the. I've referenced in terms of the topography of the property, which is unique, and wedge, they determined to seek the variance, reached out to their neighbors, satisfied themselves and the neighbors, and hopefully you, that the standards of 8-63 could be applied here without any adverse impact to adjacent property owners. So I'd be pleased to answer any questions that you want to ask with regard to this application. Thank you.
Support have any questions? Go ahead, Jane.
Hi, I just, I don't know if you noticed this, but on our agenda, it says, want to reduce the rear setback for accessory structure from 50 feet, but it's actually 40.
Forty.
That's a typo.
I think, yeah, it is, it's 40. But our, it's still 33.5 is what our.
I'm saying it's not that extra 10 feet into the setback.
I appreciate that. I think the notice in the paper was correct, but either way, it wouldn't matter because what would implicate the notice would be if the.
Would be the 33.5.
Yes. I appreciate that. Thank you.
The other question is, did you consider, or the applicants consider, just building a smaller pool? I mean, it's 40 feet long, isn't it enormous?
I don't think that even if the pool were somewhat smaller, it would, it would take us out of the problem we have with the rear setback. Yes. Why don't you just, Janine, introduce yourself for the record?
Janine D'Avanzo.
D'Avanzo.
Yes, I'm the homeowner at 236 Sherwood. That 14 by 40 is actually a fiberglass pool. So we did consider other sizes of it. If we moved it left, you hit, you don't see it, you can't tell, there's a giant boulder, there's rock ledge. To the right is literally like John had indicated, it's a drop-off. While beautiful, the house sits on top of the hill, and obviously, the topography is kind of a hilly. So we can't even move it to the right because there's like a drop-off, like a shelf.
But the 40 foot is potentially itself.
Yeah, well, the thing is, it's 40 feet, it's 14 in length. So where the back, it's, the length is, is, it's the width that is the issue. Yeah, it's the width, it's not the length. It's going to be the width. And there's also an eight-foot sun shelf, which would be good for the three and a half year olds to play.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody pictures of the area to the northeast where you say the boulders are? Yes.
I also have a video of the yard. I don't know if it's.
Do you want to see the video? Start with the picture as requested first, and then we'll see if that answers the question.
This would be right up in here. Where was the whole picture?
Oh, it's over there.
Okay, so the. This is the area, this is the deck, Mr. Short. This is the general area, the boulders are over in this vicinity here. We do have a video, but. I want to take a look at, we can show you the video, which.
I don't see it. Does anybody want to see the video on the board? I'll ask.
Believe you.
I think we're, okay.
It's rocky, all those.
Seen the neighborhood.
Yes, all those stone walls, while beautiful, were, I was told, pulled from the property during the building of the home. So I mean, it's Black Rock for a reason, right?
Okay. Further questions from the board?
I hope, Jane, I, we did, I, I think Janine answered correctly, that really what drives the variance is not so much that length of the pool, but the width of the pool, having a reasonably sized pool, at least in terms of its width.
That was one of the considerations for the design, for the pool that I did pick, is that we couldn't go too wide, so we decided to go longer based on setback. So there was actual, you know, we sat down with Palmer of Outdoor Designs, and it's been a thoughtful consideration.
And we have emphasized, obviously, the topography and the ledge, but the other thing is, it, any, beyond those constraints, if we move the pool six and a half feet out of the setback, we'd have to demolish the deck stairs. I don't know where that would.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
No further questions from the board? Anyone in the room here to speak in favor of the application or online to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, hearing none. Anyone in the room here to oppose the application, either here or online? Let's start with online. Seeing none, anybody in the room here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, hearing none. I will close the hearing now. And we will move on to number seven. That is for number 307 East Lawn Street, map 128, map 182, sorry, parcel 381, petition of Ann Barnum for a variance of the zoning regulations, Section 5.2.4.3, reduce the street line setback for an accessory structure from 30 feet, proposing 12.1 feet, permission to install a spa.
Right ahead. Jeff Bettolino, contractor, Norfolk, Connecticut, here on behalf of Ann Barnum. Basically, we're looking to install a hot tub on the side of the house. We appeal our hardship to corner lot. It's making us pertain to two front setbacks. Yard is fenced in, so the hot tub will not even be visible. Jay, I'll answer any questions for you guys if you have any. Pretty simple.
Jane, go ahead.
Why isn't the, why isn't it in the backyard?
Well, she's an elderly lady, so she, she has a door on the side of the house, and she's concerned about making her way through in the winter time and stuff like that to try to push it to the back of the house. We also have all the power and everything located on that side of the house. So for ease of installation, we're looking to put it on that side.
Any other questions?
This is also, it's a corner lot, right? So basically, two street line setbacks.
Two street.
So we could put it on one side or the other, but we'd still have street line setback.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Is anyone in the room or online here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in the room here to speak in opposition? Anyone online here to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none, close the hearing. Absolutely. And that brings us to number eight. 96 Louvain Street, that 47, parcel 29, petition of Ross Heller and Lauren Pfeifer for a variance of the zoning regulations. I'll take a shot anytime. Variance of the zoning regulations, Section 5.2.4, to reduce the two sideline setbacks from 15 feet, currently 12.6 feet and 10.7 feet, proposing 12.6 feet and 10.7 feet. In Section 5.2.5, to increase the lot coverage from 15%, proposing 17.1%, permission to construct a second story, second floor addition with attic, and to legitimize an existing shed. Premises is R3 zone.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Mary Rose Riley, president of the firm Ioni Renaissance Association, sent to Smithtown Bypass, Smithtown, New York. I came far. I represent the homeowner, Ross Heller, and his wife, whose name might be forgotten around either, regarding the premises at 96 Louvain, Fairfield, Connecticut. As you stated, the property is located in an R3 zone. We're reporting this afternoon requesting a front yard setback reduction to 34.5 with 40 foot required by code. The existing house is situated in what is currently a non-conforming location, as is the entirety of the street that they live on. The existing front yard setback is 30.7 feet to the principal dwelling, as was originally constructed. The existing home is a Cape style with some finished space under the eaves, presently consisting of a bedroom and a bathroom. The Hellers are proposing a proper second floor addition to the home to accommodate their growing family. We have intentionally kept the proposed second floor in line with the portion of the existing first floor front wall with the fence from the street, so as not to create an overly imposing facade and to reduce the severity of the variance requested. I do have some photos of the neighboring homes to demonstrate that what we are proposing is not out of character with the neighborhood, and we have also previously submitted the petition with the signatures of the immediately affected neighbors approving the proposed work. Also, as you mentioned during the course of this application, it was discovered that the existing shed in the rear yard does not have a permit. We were instructed to add it to our appeal this afternoon, and I have photos of that shed with me for your review. Since the nearest neighbors have approved of this application by signing the petition, the proposed work is not out of character with the neighborhood, and the house currently exists in a non-conforming location, so any work done to create a proper second floor would require a variance. We would respectfully ask the board grant our request to construct the new second floor addition as submitted. I will give you the photos that I have and be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the board? Jane?
Sorry.
You can ask it this, but I almost just say Jane.
So I have two, I have two questions. One is, is the square footage of the shed counted for in this survey?
I don't see. It may not have been because it was noticed as I was making my application in the Board of Appeals. It likely did not get counted on the survey because the survey was with me at the time.
So you're actually asking for more coverage than what the.
Yeah, Matt has an answer.
Sorry.
It isn't.
You did include. Okay, that's my question. Okay, and then the second question is, is the shed on a concrete foundation?
I'd have to take a look at the photos I just gave her, but I believe it is.
So the reason is.
It is. I would slide it over. I would have to.
It almost felt like this.
It's possible to be moved, but yes, it's possible to be moved, but I need to see.
It won't affect the concrete, it won't affect.
I do.
Shed, shed, who has.
Looks like it's sitting on process. Gravel.
In the front it does. What do you think about the side? I can't tell.
The side, the side looks like it's.
That wouldn't change the coverage, right? Wouldn't change the coverage anyway.
No, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be located where it is.
Wouldn't be too close to the property.
If it was moved.
Does it know it is? Do we know it is too close to the property? Five, I can't read that.
Eight.
Yes, the side is 1.5, the back is 4.1 at the closest points. It's not square to the property one.
It's not. It's sitting on.
So we don't know what, what it's sitting on, whether it can be moved? I don't know. I can find out, but.
Jane, shoot, Matt has an answer.
Matt has an answer.
State statute allows anything more than three years to be considered legal non-conforming in regard to the setback. But because they're over on coverage is the reason why I included it in the application as a count store coverage in floor area.
Thank you.
So we're only considering the coverage of the, of the, of the structure, not the setback.
Good, thank you.
Perfect.
The only thing we care about is lot coverage.
Yes.
Steve, what's the hardship?
Yep.
Hardship is that the present lot is existing non-conforming.
It's undersized.
Too close to the street as it exists, as it was constructed.
Before the code came into effect.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Hearing none. Anyone here or online here to speak in favor of this application? Self-known? Seeing none, hearing none. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Online, give you guys a minute. It's a while for lag. Anyone in the room, you know, anyone on, in the room here to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, hearing none. We'll close this hearing. And that, oh, I have to call the last one as continued, 480, item number nine, 481 Riverside Drive, 130 parcel 46, has been continued to February. That, if I'm missing anything, draws to a close this hearing. Anybody, okay, five minutes it is. We're going to take a five-minute recess for the board, and I'm back for our executive session thereafter. Chairman, you're all set. Paul's order the executive session for this meeting. I'm just going to clarify for everyone in the room and everyone listening online. The time for public comment has ended. Only discussion, the only voices to be heard in this room are going to be those of the board, myself. There will no, be no further time for comment or anything else. In order for an application to pass by this board, supermajority is required. That means you've got to get four out of five. Out of five, not going to cut it. Okay? So you either need four out of five or unanimous, and that's it. Anything that does not pass simply does not pass. Or meet that, that voting requirement will not pass. Anything that receives four. Again, all the comment is over. Questions will not be asked, shall they be answered? So we're going to start public hearing. Again, I've got to read off all the withdrawn and continued stuff first, so let's get that done. Continued docket number 14, 4185 Black Rock Turnpike, map 118, parcel 41, has been withdrawn. Continued docket number three, 1376 Pequot Avenue, map 281, parcel 35, has been continued to February. Number 10 on the continued docket, 380 Pine Creek Avenue, map 234, parcel 238A, has been continued to the February docket. First item for hearing is number one on the general docket. Application of 123 Buena Vista Road, map 128, parcel 158, petition of Jeffrey A. Stewart and Nicole M. Roy for a variance of the zoning regulations, Section 5.2.4, to reduce the rear setback from 30 feet, currently 22.9 feet, proposing 22.5 feet. And Section 5.2.5, to increase lot coverage from 20%, currently 22.4%, proposing 24.78%. Permission to construct a rear deck addition premises is a zone. I have, hear a motion to hear the application.
I can hear the application.
80 motions. Second, Jane seconds. Motion, discussion.
This is a pre-existing undersized, the lot is one and a half size as it should be in the zone. Application affects coverage with the deck. It does not affect any FAR. It's not adding any volume to the, to the property.
I get to say my reasonable thing.
The minimus.
The minimus. I think in our, our case today, probably the most de minimis, if that's something you can say in English. It looks like most de minimis. So we'll go ahead and call for a vote. We're going to go left to right. Chris?
I'm first.
You are first.
I vote to approve the.
Yes. So yes is to approve, and a no is to no. Any?
Yes.
Joe? Coming back to you. Oh, go ahead. Jane, go ahead. I was going down the line. The way Kevin did it to me once. So yes. Yes, I say yes. Carrie's only trying to make joking harder. Check over here. So that passes, I have to do my little yow thing. All right. You guys are good. Get a deck. Six Oxford Road, item number two is six Oxford Road, map 283, parcel 32A, petition of Kimberly A. and Michael J. Peretta for a variance of the zoning regulations, Section 5.2.4.3, to reduce the street line setback for an accessory structure from 30 feet, proposing 10 feet. Permission to install a hot tub premises a zone. Motion to hear the application.
To hear this application.
Jane's motion, second. 80 seconds. Discussion.
This is an oversized lot. So you don't know what the hardship is. Don't know what the hardship is.
I believe the topography was offered as the hardship. Will be noted the topography, uh, based on.
I, isn't it the septic and sewer line?
Yeah, it's the septic and the sewer line and the Where he couldn't put it, so. I also think it's a reasonable request, he noted that the, uh, that there's green barriers invisible to the neighbors, he also didn't have any objection from any neighbors, no one showed up to say we don't want it. So.
Can I just have one more comment or question on that?
Absolutely.
So when, one of the things that came up or my question was, is you were saying, well, why does it have to be there?
But once you create the hardship, I don't know if we have the right to say it can't be there, right? Because he has a non, he has a hardship or the homeowner has a hardship. So if he chooses to put it there, I don't, I think that that would be something we could improve, correct?
It is, um, we can approve it based on where it is, we can as a board. Make, possibly make a recommendation or ask if there's any condition on, on which he can tell us to put our recommendation wherever we want, but yeah, he has the right to ask that it be placed where he's placed it on his application.
And he has shown us he has a hardship.
Yes, yep. Chris?
Uh, yes, yes.
Joe, yes, yes. I've knocked it down. Number three, I'm gonna take a very nice deep breath for this one. So, number three has been offered with conditions, so the first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna read the call and make a motion that we hear this with the conditions, so I'm gonna read it out, what the conditions are. And then I'll ask for a motion to hear the call with the conditions. Will prove it with the conditions. Eight seventy-nine Riverside Drive map one thirty-nine parcel two sixty. Petition of M L W Design Build LLC. For a variance of the zoning regulations, section five dot two dot four to reduce the street line sideline and some of two sideline setbacks from thirty feet, seven feet and twenty-five feet. Currently twenty-four feet to the house and fifteen point eight feet to the open porch, four point two feet and sixteen point nine feet. Proposing twenty-four point one feet to the house. And nineteen feet to the porch, four point two feet and sixteen point nine feet. And section five dot two dot five to increase lot coverage. And total floor area from twenty feet. I'm sorry, from twenty percent and forty percent currently twenty-four and twenty-two point four percent proposing twenty-seven point six percent and forty-nine percent. Permission to construct second floor with attic. Rear two and a half story and front porch additions. And make the home FEMA compliant and a detached one car garage. For this application, Elise is sitting in place of Katie. Welcome, Elise. Make sure we can hear you, just test your mic for me.
Uh, testing.
I wanna make sure I can hear her, that's okay. Alright, so I need a motion to approve with conditions as listed as follows. Uh, condition number one is that an evergreen barrier be constructed. In the length of sixty feet. I have to read this back when we do it again, so I wanna make sure I get it right. Sixty feet, starting from the front of the dwelling to the rear of the dwelling. Of the lot, sorry, from the front of the dwelling to the rear of the lot. Second condition being offered is that a cedar fence be constructed between driveways. So I need a motion to approve this stated conditions. Jane moves, I need a second.
Second.
Elise seconds, nice job online there. Right? So, let's have discussion.
So I asked the question, why the forty-nine percent, which is that extra nine percent is almost twenty-five percent for volume than is permitted in that zone. I didn't, I asked, what was the hardship and I didn't really get a satisfactory answer. It had to do with the property, it had to, you know, the, the answer was favor of this application.
I think the
I thought they said the hardship was it's a pre-existing non-
Yeah, the, the, the hardship that exists with the property.
Right.
Was stated as a pre-existing non-conforming lot, which gives them a hardship for us to hear the application. What you're asking for justification of the increase of the F A R.
Just, just a hardship does not necessarily give a blanket permission to do whatever you want, that's why we have these discussions. So my opposition to this is that the volume of the house is just bigger than it should be, my view for the property. The extra nine percent volume is, isn't warranted by the hardship.
But they did talk that to the neighborhood, they're building kind of neighborhood like structures.
Don't look at precedent, we look at each
Well, what we do, what we do consider is the character of the neighborhood itself, and we consider whether it was approved or not, whether it was pre-existing or not. I think, based on what I've seen of this neighborhood, that it's not outside of the charac, the house that they're proposing is not outside the character of the neighborhood. Don't think that it presents a risk of a canyoning effect in the neighborhood, I don't think that it uh, presents any real significant, um, detriment to the, to the view or the comprehensive zoning plan. I think with the conditions offered, um, and the amenable nature of the exchange with the neighbors. I think with appeasement of those concerns. Think it's a reasonable ask, I don't if this was in a, a smaller neighborhood or a confined space, I think I would agree with you. I think based on where it is and what it is, I don't think it's a I don't think it's a monster in a, in a small cage, you know what I mean? So, any other?
But Jane, you don't think it fits the neighborhood, you think it's overreaching?
Volume. I are, is just too big for the lot.
Too big for the lot, the lot usually see too much of the lot coverage as it's needed.
It's not the cover, it's not the coverage, it's the F A R.
So we'll, uh, we'll call it to a vote, Chris. Unless we want, unless we wanna you know what, Elise is here, we'll let Elise go first, Elise, go ahead.
I'm a yes.
Yes, you do have to go second though.
Um, I'm a yes.
Okay, Jane?
I'm a no.
Joe? And I am a yes. The application is granted. That brings care of that. Number four, two eighty-one East Lawn Street map one eighty-two parcel three eighty-three was continued to February. Onto number five, nine thirty-nine Redding Road map two twenty-three parcel forty-five. Petition of Amy Nostico for a variance of zoning regulations, section five dot two dot four to reduce the street line setback from sixty feet proposing thirty-nine point one feet. Permission to construct a detached garage with an accessory apartment premises is triple A zone. I need a motion to hear the application.
Motion.
Chris?
I second.
Jane seconds, discussion please. I'll get it started, I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable application, as he stated, he's still sixty feet from the, uh, from the asphalt, from the street itself. He stated very well who was, he was here to represent.
Well, he has the stream and the wetlands, yeah.
Has the, he has, he has a stream and wetlands issue which yeah, absolutely, um, so he, so he's got the, uh, he's got the conditions for me for a variance. I think it's, I think it's fairly straightforward, any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion. Elise is gone, Chris, you're back to first.
Uh, yes.
Yes, Katie, yes, Jane.
Yes.
Joe, yes. Brian is a yes. Is carried. We're now on to two thirty-six Sherwood Farm Road map one seventy-six. Parcel twenty-six D petition of Janine. Devon's, uh, come on, I was I had, I was trying to redeem myself as an Italian. No, I'm not, we're done. Thomas Craig M. Thomas for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five dot two dot four to reduce the rear setback. For an accessory structure from I'm gonna, man, I'm gonna say it, forty. Proposing thirty-three point five feet, permission to construct in-ground pool premises, double A zone. Need a motion to approve, or motion to hear the application.
A motion to hear.
Chris, you won that one, motion a second. Eighty seconds. Discussion, please.
So Jane, I thought your question on the pool was good, but I thought their answer was excellent because they can't, they have to go into the setback to at least have a pool that makes any kind of sense, based on the topography. Yeah, and the topography and the ledge is also right?
Yeah. Ledge itself as stated in the application was, is arch, is the reason for arching. Anybody else? Ready to a vote, Chris?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes, from me. Five out of five. You know, I'm gonna gavel out, okay? Number seven, three oh seven East Lawn Street map one eighty-two. Parcel three eighty-one petition of Ann Barum. For a variance of the zoning regulations, five dot two dot four dot three to reduce the street line setback for an accessory structure. From thirty feet proposing twelve point one feet, permission to install a spa. Lots of spas today, lots of hot tubs, I need a motion to approve. Katie, motion, second.
Jane seconds.
Jane seconds. Discussion, please.
Understand it's a corner lot, but just had a question about locating it there when it could go anywhere else in the backyard. Wouldn't need a variance.
Oh, I think as we discussed a few moments ago, it's a right to request the location. He stated that it's invisible to the neighbors, there was no objection from the neighborhood as to the location of the hot tub. Or the spa as it may be.
And we also had people
Yeah, this, you have the signatures, like I said, there was, everybody's in favor of it, nobody's objected to it.
Can I ask Mr. Decker a question?
Sure.
Does a spa have to have a fence around it like swimming pool?
Would be a building code, uh, and I'm gonna say yes.
I don't see that shown here.
The fence is around the property. They've got it around the entire
There it is, okay.
By the building code, they're required to have alarms on any doors. Over to that, any structure, any pool that's less than forty-two inches in height.
Right, so when that, when this goes before building code, they'll
Correct, yep.
Okay, let's bring it to a vote. Chris?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Joe? Yes. Brian's a yes. Passes. My gavel. Use it that often, we'll maximize it. And we are on to number eight, ninety-six Louvain Street map forty-seven parcel twenty-nine. Petition of Ross Heller and Lauren Pfeifer for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five dot two dot four. To reduce the two sideline setbacks from fifteen feet currently twelve point six feet and ten point seven feet. Proposing twelve point six feet and ten point seven feet. And section five dot two dot five to increase the lot coverage from fifteen percent proposing seventeen point one percent. Permission to construct a second floor addition with the attic. And to legitimize an existing shed premises is R three zone. Motion to approve. Motion to approve, Katie, second, Jane second. We've come to a new pattern, ladies and gentlemen. Cause I can't, cause I can't do it anymore. Yeah, that was four years, just to go fast. It's the only way you can Google me. Discussion?
I mean, there's no change to the sidelines setbacks, they're just, they're just it's not conforming, so there's, I think, so that to continue, now, yeah, again, the coverage, two percent, there is a hardship.
I, I think, I don't think there's any impact on the comprehensive zoning plan, I don't think there's any impact really to the neighborhood, other than a nice looking house. And the shed really isn't much of an issue, um, because the setback is not something that we're here to discuss. It's really just an issue of coverage. I, I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable request. Other comments? Concerns, questions, anything else? Bring it to a vote, Chris?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Joe? And I'm a yes. Motion is done. Thank you for attending, everyone, the motion, the meeting is now adjourned.